I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, we'll start the meeting with the roll, please.
Butler? Jordan?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Thrash?
Here.
Vincentzo?
Here.
Oprich? Smith? Four members present.
Okay, we have shorthanded this evening. We have three council members unavoidably out of town. First item on the agenda will be the minutes from the May 16th meeting. Is there anyone who did not receive their copy of the minutes for the 16th? Does anyone have any questions? Okay, at this time, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes from the 16th. Mr. Vincentzo, you're second. Mr. Thrash, take a roll call vote, please.
Jordan?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincentzo?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
Okay, the minutes from the May 16th regular meeting are accepted. Next item is the June 1st special meeting. Has anyone did not get their copy of those minutes? Is there anyone who has a question on those? Okay, hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote to accept the minutes from the special meeting on the 1st. We'll move. Second.
Jordan?
Epstein.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincentzo?
Yes.
Three in favor, one abstention. Motion carries.
Okay, those minutes, do we need more on that?
Yeah, we may need to do that again.
Yeah, because you, the extension, yeah.
So we'll have to wait, we have an extension, so we'll have to accept the 16 minutes of the first on the next meeting. Okay, under citizens' hearing this evening, we have a guest, Mr. Doug Walsh from the library. He's going to give us an update on the storybook trail. Mr. Walsh, welcome. Glad you're here. Just stay close to the mic and you have the floor, sir.
Okay, thank you. My name is Doug Walsh. I'm the director of the St. Clairsville Public Library. Our summer reading program just began. It'll run through August 6th. The theme is Oceans of Possibilities. So we have 30 events over the next few weeks to encourage reading as a fun activity. There'll be lots of prize baskets, and for every book read, you get a ticket. One of the prize baskets is, we're working with the Cumberland Trail Fire Department. It'll be a giving basket, and for every 100 books read and ticket put in the basket, there'll be a giveaway back to the Cumberland Trail Fire Department. So there'll be smoke detectors, fire extinguishers, and if enough books are read, a touch-a-truck at the end of the summer reading program in July 21st. Last fall, I came and presented to you about a grant that the library received. We are one of 45 libraries in the state of Ohio that received this grant, and it was for a story walk, a permanent story walk. And I wrote the grant with the idea that it would be a partnership with the city, and the city has been wonderful to work with. I especially want to thank Mr. Greenwood and the mayor and Mr. Pitlack. The first posts for this story walk, this permanent story walk, were installed today. Five of the posts are now installed, and our grand opening ribbon cutting is June 14th at 11:00 a.m. And there'll be snacks and games and prizes, and the opportunity for families to walk along the bike trail and read a story. And we'll switch out that story every few weeks, so people can come back to the trail and read a new story. And again, I just want to thank the city for this opportunity and partnering with the library for this grant. Thank you.
I want to thank you. I think you've done an excellent job with the library to set this up for the youth, the people in the community, and I'm sure everyone here is very appreciative of what you've done. So anyone has any comments or questions they'd like to make to Mr. Walsh? Okay, thank you. We're glad we can help, and thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on. There's no correspondence that I'm aware of.
I guess you could call it correspondence, I don't know. But as you're all aware, the Run for the Wall riders came through, spent the night in St. Clairsville. Sunday evening, they had, that was Memorial Day weekend, Sunday evening, they had a really nice dinner. We got to hear from the three Gold Star families, and their stories were so moving, if you had dry eyes after you heard them, I would have been very surprised. But then, 7:30 Monday morning, they all met up at the courthouse for a send-off. They also had a Memorial Day service. And Councilman Vincentzo and I were there and were able to receive the really nice plaque that they gave us, and I was just going to pass it down to council, and then whenever, I guess they'll hang it on a wall, or whatever you do. Thank you very much, Lynda and Don, for accepting that on behalf of the city. It's appreciated.
Okay, that's all we have under correspondence. We'll move on to the mayor's report. Mayor, do you have reports, anything?
Yes, I have, yes. My mayor's report tonight starts with the fact that we are gathering to exercise our constitutional rights, and I ask us not to forget the thousands of brave soldiers who died on this day, 81 years ago on D-Day, and they helped to liberate the European continent from the evil of the Nazis. So make sure we remember that and say a silent prayer for them. I met with Chief Arbans and Jeremy. We were talking about some school safety issues after the tragedy in Uvalde, and we were talking about anything our department might need as far as training or equipment to keep our schools as safe as possible, and it sounds like we are up to the task and in good shape, and I appreciate Jeremy and Matt meeting with me concerning that. Met with Jeff Vaughn, several representatives of ODOT and Jeremy regarding the temporary water line. I'm sure Jeremy will give you more detailed results of that meeting. Met with Eric Gay in the Rec Department for a first post-concert meeting, just kind of a wrap-up. And of course, we had to cancel the concert last week because of thunderstorms. That was a good call. I mean, I was out on my porch, and there were thunderstorms. They weren't real close, but in the distance, and that was, that was a good call. I think they're going to reschedule for this Thursday with rumors, right? 6:00 to 8:00, the band is Rumors, that was going to be here last week. Also, from the Rec Department, the first-ever concert in the gazebo is on Friday night, June 10th, featuring acoustic guitarist Logan Wojcik from 7:30 to 9:00. And I hid my dog down on the bike path the other night, and I had two people come up to me and say, "Thank you, this is a great use of this resource. We love the gazebo, and we're looking forward to it, so pray it doesn't rain." We had a special utility meeting on Friday, and they approved filling the pool for Memorial Park. That's a good thing. Last Friday was a fun Friday, where about once a month, I'll take treats to all of our departments, thank you for all they do. I encourage everyone to come to First Friday, which will be this week, on Friday, obviously, and this week will be Second Saturday. I know Wendy and Tiffany at the Chamber put together great food and great shopping for our town. This Saturday, June 11th, will be the Second Saturday in town. Please come out, show your support to our vendors, our merchants, and the St. Clairsville Chamber. I was participating in a meeting with Jeremy and Gabe Hayes regarding some of the projects which are forthcoming in our county. I'll be leaving tomorrow to go to Columbus for the Ohio Mayor's League, Mayor's Conference, and I'll be going until Thursday. I'm sure you'll all miss me. I was asked, and I'm honored to have been asked, to be one of the mayors, to meet with a Japanese delegation of businessmen who may be looking at Ohio for investing in building. And I'm looking forward to that very much on Wednesday morning. It'll be a breakfast. And also, finally, the Chamber is sponsoring an art walk through town on Thursday night from 5:00 to 7:00. Please come out and see the beautiful works of art from local talents, and I'm going to throw a shameless plug in. I've got four paintings over at the library, so I always enjoy that. I love art, and I love seeing us encourage art. So this will be a wonderful opportunity to observe local talent. So I think that's about it. Jim, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Anyone have any questions for the mayor?
Okay, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to Service Director, Mr. Jeremy Greenwood.
Good evening, council. It's been a busy couple of weeks. Let's start with the legislation items that are before us. We've got 2022, 23, the electric utility budget. This is listed as emergency so that we can advertise it to the citizens in July and August to be able to be ready for September. 2022, 24 is the transfer of funds in the Street Department. That's emergency. That'll be the second reading, since the first reading was the last special meeting. 2022, 25 is emergency also. It's the paving. It'll also be the second reading. 2022-26, administrative raises. That's an emergency in there. It was, has requested by a council member, and per last year's meeting and last year's discussion, this was emergency, so it does not have to be retroactive at the beginning of July when it comes through. And as we mentioned last year, it is in the budget already. It's just one of those things that we don't ask for, for the entire year, but it is budgeted for the entire year. 2022-27 is the One Ohio Region 11 Board Creation. That's an emergency. That was requested by the board and by Omega. They have to have their board set up by June 17th, which obviously, with us not having four council members tonight, that's going to be a non-go for us with this, but they still want us to have the legislation done as soon as we can. 2022-28 is the ward boundaries. Then that's listed as a non-emergency, as directed in the last council meeting. And then, the only other real outstanding thing that I have still is the gas segregation program. There's still four groups that are wanting to work with us. I'm working with Elizabeth to see what we need to do based on the original legislation, if we have to go out for advertisement again, or if we can just select a company. Since the last regularly scheduled meeting, we've had over 21 different meetings with different people, different entities, some of them multiple times. Completed projects, I've got two-thirds of the water tank inspections completed. They did the Dorothy tank and the, what we're calling the light bulb, the 1982 tank. They have not completed the Witch's Hat, which is the old 1929 one yet, so I have copies of the reports there, if anyone wants a copy of those. They have several recommendations that we're going to be looking at. One is to probably pressure wash the 1982 tank and to do some interior work, because it's got a couple pieces of corrosion inside it. The EPA did an inspection of the West End plant. We have a report on that, too. That gives us the inspection report, and then they also had recommendations, they had four recommendations on things, which, some of which we were already implementing and others that we are in the process of implementing. So I have that, if anyone wants a copy of that also. EPA also did inspection of the water plant. We did get a notice of violation. It's basically because our secondary backup high-service pump has been down. At this point, we were hoping to have already been switched to the county, so that's the reason why we haven't fixed it yet, with this being an issue. I've already talked to the EPA. We're using the county as a backup, but they still want us to have that, so we're working on getting that taken care of. Also had an update on the orders and findings from before. It's an official letter from them that says, "All the violations except the last one have been resolved." The one that has not yet is the one that owner and operator shall ensure that all facilities and equipment necessary for treatment and distribution of water shall be maintained at a minimum, so the function, so it has to function as intended. This is the one where they're going to make us switch to the county water, so that's the one we're waiting on. We're ready to go. We're waiting on the county to get their equipment done. Smoke testing, notifications went out in the utility bill. The first round has been also sent out with the postcards. We were hoping to start this week, but with the rain coming, we might have to push that back a little bit. The V-V Box salt spreader was installed, the wiring in one of our trucks, so that's done. And we've also gotten our flower hanging baskets up and taken care of now, too. Upcoming projects, originally, we were going to be starting on the construction for the I-70 water line. We called to get our traffic control set up and had notification that ODOT had a potential project that was going to conflict with ours. So we've had at least two or three meetings with ODOT and various entities in going up to the EPA, up to the top. The gist of it is, basically, our project has been delayed until October or November. If we would have had that emergency legislation first to actually get the loan done, instead of waiting the month and a half that we had to wait to get the loan processed, we would have already been under construction with that, so they couldn't have stopped us. But since we hadn't started yet, they basically stopped us. They're doing a paving and a drainage project, so they've kind of overridden us and going to make us wait. Ordered, getting fabricated, I should say, new rakes for the West End plant. That'll help basically rake out any of the stuff that gets flushed down into our sewer system, the wet wipeys, et cetera, any plastic, anything that somebody flushes that they shouldn't be flushing down the toilet. We end up having to take that out before it gets processed in the plant. We also have a general fund levy that's coming up. There was a five-year levy that was put on in '17. We'll have that legislation probably for the next meeting to discuss. Still looking at the inflow and infiltration, as we mentioned about the sanitary sewer smoking, going through that. Had a meeting on the potential purchase of a couple of the properties that we talked about before. Building projects, Rec Center restrooms are still on there, train station renovation, junior fair, the police locker room, and then the K-9 wash stations. We'll hit on some of those and, under some of the departments. Electric Department, working on underground primary in an area, doing pole replacement, service work, disconnect, working on streetlights. Vehicle maintenance and then some building maintenance also. Had four call-outs. The water and wastewater, as I mentioned, the I-70 project is still hanging over. Fixing hydrants and curb boxes and valves, I don't think we're ever going to get over doing all that. The rakes for the West End plant, we're still at eight of those things we don't like to mention, which is pretty good for the year, considering last year at this time, we had over 20 or 30. West End plant work, doing some work out there, trying to get that up and running for some of that. We're doing our monthly operating reports to submit. We also had maize water loss. It was calculated 38%. To combat this and try and get it down even further, we're trying to get the leak detection equipment deployed. We're also going out and checking the lines in any of these wet areas that we think might be springs, so we'll start checking those. Street Department, they've been working on the storybook trail down at the bikeway, patching potholes, trimming trees, mowing, street sweeper, obviously the flower baskets that we talked about. Rec Center, a couple weeks ago, we had a fish survey completed by ODNR. They came down, and there's general results. There were some nice fish in the reservoir. Below are the general results from the St. Clairsville Reservoir Support Fish Electrofishing Survey conducted on May 25th, 2022. Some general observations, the lake was clear, and had a depth of 1.8 meters with a suitable amount of aquatic vegetation. The overall fish community appears to be well-balanced. The large mouth bass rates, catch rates, were 89 fish an hour, which is right at the state average. The growth rates were higher than the statewide average. Bass are reaching 13 inches by age four. These parameters indicate a great bass fishery. Bluegill catch rates were about average, but the growth rates were poor. We did observe a respectable amount of channel catfish, around 15 to 20 inches. There are fish, these fish are likely from our recent stalking over the last 10 years. We did observe a few fish species oddities for a lake this size, but they occurred in low densities. These fish include a long-nosed gar, white bass, white croppy, and gizzard chad. How we got a long-nosed gar in there, I do not know. I'm assuming somebody put it in there, but they were likely introduced from bait buckets or anglers trying to help. In parentheses, "Please advise the general public to refrain from stalking the lake. These fish species could cause detrimental harm to your great large mouth bass population." So that was that. Couple of the other little things going on, the mayor mentioned the one concert that was canceled. It has been rescheduled for Thursday, June 23rd. The community garden is completely sold out. And then I also want to announce that Eric did an excellent job and then was able to put in for money for the Capitol build project. Put in for $300,000. We ended up getting $150,000 from the state. So this is for the train depot and the junior fair building renovations. We're going to be looking for additional funding. We had a partner with the school. The school was going to kick in some money for us, too. The city committed some funds to that, but at this point, obviously, the budget is probably more than what we got, so we're going to continue to look and see what we can do. But I want to thank Eric for his hard work on this. This is really good. Police, I don't know, Chief, did they tell you, we received our $1,000 grant today? So we got a $1,000 grant from the Public Entities Pool of Ohio, and then Chief was also working, and then we've got our body camera grant funding, and so, excellent news for all of this stuff. Good to the city. There's no one out sick that we know of. It's also the beginning of the month, so I want to do Employee of the Month. This gentleman has been working with us for four years. He's the seasonal helper with the city. Basically, that means he does mowing, watering flowers, weed eating, working on the flower beds, weeding flowers, just about anything that we can ask him to do, and does a great, excellent job at that. He's been married for 33 years. He has two children, two grown children, a boy and a girl, and he informed me that the girl's getting married this year. His hobbies include bird watching. He loves bluebirds, butterflies and monarchs, which he actually wants to do more milkweed planting down at the bike trail, so we're going to work on that and try and go through. He's a general nature lover of all, and enjoys playing disc golf. This month's Employee of the Month is George Russianberg. Congratulations to George. He's a retired gentleman that helps us out during the summer, so it's been very much helpful. So, and that's everything I have tonight, Jim.
Okay, thanks, Jeremy. Does anyone have any questions?
I do. The EPA copies of, I had asked for, any and all correspondence to and from, please.
Yes.
Also, the South Park Court, where are we on that? You had said if we pass the budget, it's still there?
I still have not heard back from the Army.
Okay, what's the number for that?
I do not know. I know I have the contact for the guy that is the...
Army, yes. Okay, I'll take that, because I'll just keep calling.
I'll send it to you.
All right, I'll call every day. And the grass cutting, I noticed on Young Lane, like, they cut a little and leave the weeds around the fire hydrant, and then cut some more, you know what I mean? They skip. Is there a way for them to, is weed eat around that?
Which area? We've only got three guys...
Young Lane, and then, and Neff Street, it's like four, four feet high.
Is that, is that the city property or the other one?
Yes.
Because we're getting calls about people wanting us to cut their own property, and we're not cutting people's property.
Yeah, it's, it's...
If it's city property, we can get to it and see.
It is, the city...
It's just a matter of putting it on the list.
City usually cuts it, but it's just, for some reason, have not cut.
You said that was Young Lane?
And on Neff Street, it's like four feet. Okay. All right, that was, I think that was all. So the South Park, you're going to give me that phone number?
Yep.
Okay.
The, the contact is the Army recruiter is the guy.
No, that's all.
Okay, we moved down the line. Donnie?
You were just speaking about vehicle maintenance. Is there anything severe, or is it just general?
Just routine, oil changes, making sure the front ends are greased up, just kind of checking the general condition, make sure the frames aren't rusted out, et cetera, et cetera.
I was wondering if we have any major equipment that's on its last leg?
Well, yes, we do. We have several trucks that were all purchased at the same time, and they've been ridden, ridden pretty rough. But, yeah. So what we're trying to do is maintain what we can and then go through it, and we'll see. What we're going to try to start doing is staggering them so that we're not hit all at once. I know what happened. They got the oil and gas money, and they went, "Ooh, let's go buy trucks." And they bought trucks, and now the problem is, all of them are coming up, you know, lame at the same time. So that's kind of where we're at with that.
All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
DC?
The levy is a general operating expenses levy?
Yes.
And it'll be a straight renewal, not a replacement or anything?
Yes. From my understanding, yes.
Okay, what's the millage of, what's the...
Was it 1.9?
Okay. Does that generate roughly? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jeremy. Thank you.
Yes, I have her paper, that's how I know. And then, we'll have another one that'll be next year. It's a police levy for 1.95, but that'll be, we'll get that next year.
Okay, we'll move on to Chief Arbenz. I'm sure you have a report today.
Good evening, council. May 34th, we had 431 calls for service, nine accidents, 45 arrests, six warrants, three domestics, and 135 traffic stops. So we always get a lot busier in the summertime. As Jeremy mentioned, we did get that $1,000 grant. That'll go towards our Alexa poll, which is our policy and procedure bill that we pay annually. And we did receive from the Department of Justice our $16,880 on the body worn camera grant this past Thursday. Yay, right? That was a lot of work. Currently, I'm applying for the ARPA grant that's available for officer wellness. We did not meet their criteria for retention and recruitment because we had to have shown a loss of staff in between certain dates of COVID, which we did not lose anybody. So we're, we can't apply for the officer wellness portion of it. There's a service provided by Cortico, which is a partner company for our policy and procedures, where the officers will have Wellness Personal App on their phone, where they can do self-assessments for mental, for physical, for financial, for all kinds of wellness. You know, it's just a nice thing for them to have, and I think that they would be well-served because they can do it themselves and not reach out to anybody. It's completely anonymous. This grant would cover the cost of that for two years, so about, a value of about $5,200. And that is all we have for tonight.
I'd like to do a shout-out, chief. You guys had a very exciting day today. Maybe he'll tell you here shortly what all happened, but it was on the news, and again, nothing but wonderful praise for our police department and the wonderful job they did.
Yeah, thanks. If you guys weren't aware, we had a bank robbery this afternoon at the Plaza at St. Clairsville, and we pursued with other agencies on 70 up into Cambridge, where they crashed out, and both were in custody, and nobody was injured, thankfully.
Thank you very much.
Guys all did a great job. Thanks.
And I think we have a police chief who's having a significant birthday present, too. I won't mention that.
Thanks, Matt. Good job, you guys.
Yeah, good job.
Again, excellent work, and I'm glad, glad you, glad everybody's... Okay. Anyone have any questions for the police chief? Okay, we'll move on to Finance Director, Annette Williams. Annette, do you have a report this evening?
I do. Good evening, everyone, and I want to thank Matt for helping with his grant, but sometimes it takes hours on these grants just to log into the system sometimes, so we spend an hour or an hour and a half just getting on to request our money. So we spend an hour or an hour and a half just getting on to request our money. So when we get these monies, it takes a lot of time to do the work behind them. I'm actually working on the tax budget for 2023. It's due, I think, like the first week in July with the county. So UAN has a spreadsheet, financial worksheet, that I just plug the figures in. It's kind of an estimate of our revenue for next year and our expenditures. It's not broken down to the appropriation line items on this report. So it's not the actual final appropriations, which will be at the beginning of the year. So I will get you a copy of that this week, finish it this week. And then you have a week or so to look at it. And depending on the due date, whether it will be emergency legislation attached to that. So, and that's all.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Anyone have any questions for the Finance Director? Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to planning and zoning. Mr. Murphy?
Thanks, Jim. Council, we do have a Board of Zoning Appeals meeting set up for Tuesday, June 14th, 6:00 p.m. here in Council Chambers. Two variance hearings are on the agenda. The first is the First Settlement Physical Therapy located at 248 East Main Street. That's the former convenient location. They are requesting a variance be permitted to cover their entire front windows with signage. Right now, you've noticed, I'm sure it already is, they weren't aware of our sign guidelines. And they have an in-house company that attached them. Then I contacted them. So they're, rather than removing their, they have different HIPAA requirements that they want to request a variance from code for that. The second is a resident at 146 North Sugar Street is requesting to be permitted to have an eight-by-10 accessory structure in his front yard due to issues related to his quadriplegic stepson. Our code right now doesn't allow a shed in the front yard for the obvious reasons. But again, they're requesting a variance from code due to the reasons I mentioned. And then again, that public hearing is Tuesday, June 14th, 6:00 p.m. As far as new businesses, New Step Cosmetics is located at 110 East Main Street. That's the former tattoo shop location. New Step Cosmetics is a permanent makeup business. Another new business, the 252 West Main Street Refresh Aesthetic Center. My suggestion, I just don't know all of what they do, but go to their website. It gives a lot more detail. I think a lot of this botox and that type of stuff. As far as grass, grass complaints on private property, if the public does contact you, let them know we are pretty much aware of all those properties. But if you hear something, let me know and I can fill you in on what's going on with that property. Most, if not all, tend to be due to foreclosures or maybe an elderly resident's passed away and they don't have an estate. I wish it was as easy as picking up a phone and making a call and you get it done, but it's not that easy. When you have estate issues, you're trying to find someone that maybe is going to take over that property, which usually isn't the case. As far as foreclosures, it's tracking down the company. Right now, I'm even having difficulty on some of the properties that we would cut and then put a lien because the companies are too busy. They don't have the time. They don't have the manpower. I've contacted many companies. If I see a new one, I contact them. And the other difficulty, once they get this tall, many companies don't have a brush hog or something. Then maybe you can get through that. Plus, they don't know what's underneath that grass and they're tentative sometimes. They'll put their expensive equipment, start through the property, get something that's on the ground. And then they have thousands of dollars worth of that. So again, it's, we're aware it's not that easy, unfortunately. As far as many of the projects, we talked about the electric and the upgrades being made there and the water that's on the horizon. And one thing we always have to do is just promote the positive of those projects. You know, the water line project, the roads are going to be torn up. And probably won't be able to pave many of them for years, depending on how much money we have. So it's always just trying to keep positive. And when I sit down with someone coming in about a permit, I try to emphasize, you know, hey, the advantages of the electric upgrades were made, Donnie's responsible for. The water line upgrades, this is all good for the future. So if anyone talks to us about that, it's good to push the positive. And we don't want to see the roads get torn up. But again, we're replacing our water lines. So it's good for the future. So it's good to put a positive spin on that. That's it. Oh, actually, one last thing. The Stormwater Quality Board met in Mid Bay. Don's a part of that. We approved the AEP Stormwater Management Plan for its new transmission line route through the city. And a lot of those locations are just temporary. They put the new pole in. They have to have stormwater management around them during the construction period. And then it basically goes away. So it was a pretty straightforward proposal. That's it.
Any questions for Mr. Murphy? Okay, thanks, Tony.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll move on at this time to the council committees. Again, we have Mr. Smith, Ms. Butler, and Ms. Oprich are absent this evening. So we will move on directly to the streets north side. Mr. Vincent, do you have any comments or reports?
The only comment, the street department is out. Been out and about and they are patching holes, doing a good job. If we could, we got the one location, the bottom will end up. That water area is dried up and there's some pretty deep potholes there. But since it's dry, I think we can take care of that. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Move on to streets south side. Mr. Thresh?
No report.
Safety, Mr. Thresh?
No report.
Building and grounds, Mr. Jordan, do you have any?
No report.
Plan of Mission, Mr. Thomas?
No report.
Fire District, Mr. Jordan?
Yes. At the recommendation of the fire chief, the board voted to accept the resignation of part-time employee Zachary Hasenakis effective June 1st, 2022, and the removing of Taylor Vogel from full-time employee employment to part-time employee status effective June 18th, 2020, at the rate of 1550 per hour. Both have taken jobs with the Columbus Fire Department. At the recommendation of the fire chief, the board approved the hiring of Clayton Gilliam as a part-time employee effective May 25th, 2020, at the rate of 1550 per hour. Also, at the recommendation of the chief, the board voted to accept sealed bids for the sale of boat 23 and to formally accept the South Central Power Grant in the amount of $3,600 to purchase the inflatable rescue boat. The board also approved the bid for the diesel exhaust system in compliance with FEMA. There was one bid, and that was from Magna Grip, and it was for $97,760. And the funds will be provided by a federal grant. For Community Day, the district will be providing prevention material, cooling station, and souvenirs for the kids. You may have noticed there's a monument, the new Cumberland Trail Monument, in front of the Sheriff's Museum. That was all a collaboration of the Fire District, the Union, and the Firefighters Association. The funding came from local businesses, and the district wishes to thank those businesses. And also, they want to thank the commissioners and county for allowing the location and for providing landscaping. And last but not least, they wanted to thank the city for possibly allowing it to be placed at the amphitheater or the bike trail, because those were two locations that were also considered. The Union chose that location because of the surveillance, that, you know, that it would always be under surveillance. It also has good lighting and, of course, the landscaping that they're going to provide. There will be an official unveiling and ceremony at a later date. I will let council, you know, I'll keep you posted on all of that. The next meeting is June 20th, 9:00 a.m. at the station.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Anyone have any questions for Linda?
It's a beautiful monument. Check it out. Really, really nice. And it's a great addition to the plaza.
Okay, we'll move on to recreation. Mr. Thomas?
Okay, well, Jeremy and the mayor did a good job in starting us out. But Jeremy left out one very important thing that came out at the last meeting is that the charcuterie class at the rec center was a wild and wonderful success. So they're going to do it again this fall. Also, another popular class, which is coming up, June 23rd. And Jeremy is our resident expert. It's the succulents class. So if anybody wants to know what the succulent class is, speak to our service. I coined him as an expert now. But yeah, we have Zumba, too. But just following up, all joking aside, those are the charcuterie class, which still baffles me, the whole thing about that whole concept. But nonetheless, was very popular. And it will be held again this coming fall. Succulents class is June 23rd. The lights in the inside, have they been replaced yet?
No.
Okay.
We're trying to find a time to fit them in.
Fit them in in between everything.
The lights are purchased, they're in.
Right.
They're pre-wired, ready to go.
We're just trying to find a time to do it.
Okay, right. So that, the new lights in the gym will be up. That will complement the new floor in the rec center. Beyond that, the, we had notice today from Eric that the next regularly scheduled meeting is June 23rd, two weeks from this Thursday. However, that's the new date for the concert. So that, that, that meeting, the board's meeting will be moved. And once that's moved, we'll get notice to everybody. That just came down this afternoon that because of the need to set up for the postponed concert, that we're not going to have a meeting at 4:30 on that day. So the staff needs to work to set that up. Which, by the way, for those of you who attended the May 25th one, a wild, successful evening. Fun, great weather, nice crowd. And I think it'll grow. I think a lot of people weren't prepared for something before the Memorial Day. And so hopefully, on the June 23rd one, it'll be more attended. As the mayor indicated, the first acoustic night at the gazebo. Do your best, please, to get that message out. This is new for the city of St. Clairsville. And so people aren't, they don't have that in their head. We did this last year. We need to do it again. So those of you who are boisterous like me on social media, I know we'll get this message out for Friday night. Other than that, staff continues to do a great job. I concur with Jeremy and the mayor. Getting that Capitol Bill money is a nice coup for the city and credit to Eric and staff and credit to all of you in the administration for helping him with that. Thank you very much.
Any questions for everybody?
I just have a comment. If anybody in the council wants to pick up signs, Eric, Debbie, and Jen are on it. Like, they're going to put signs down at the gazebo, laminate it about the concert Friday night. They're going to put one under that glass. But if anybody, like J C, you could put one maybe in the pizza shop. Or if anybody has any place they think, yeah, right here about the bike, the acoustic night, we've got them. So please ask Jen to run some off for you. And as far as the charcuterie night, it was wonderful because they brought such wonderful things, showed us how to align them, and there was wine. So what else can I say? It's not baffling. It was wonderful.
Charcuterie is a bunch of...
Cheese.
A bunch of those.
One question.
Bottom board.
I had one person ask me, what do they have to do or can they with the food trucks at the concert?
Well, get a hold of Eric. The intent for the concerts is to have one main food provider in a quote-unquote dessert food truck. That's so that they're not competing with each other. But to call the rec center ideally and see what is booked and what may be open for later. And I don't know if it's filled or not, but...
I think it's got it filled.
Yeah.
There's room for the Community Days. Obviously, all of those vendors come for that and going through, so.
Yeah, just have them call staff.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to Park District. Linda, do you have anything on Park District?
The only thing, they wanted to thank the city for the water. That was the big thing for them. The next meeting will be next Monday, the 13th, at the park, 4:30.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll move on to ordinance and resolutions. Law Director Elizabeth, please. Elizabeth, before we start on that, I wanted to tell everybody, look at your agenda. There was a misprint. 2225 is actually on the back of the agenda. The one on the front, 202225 on there, was a misprint. It should be 202226. That's not in the legislation, just in on the agenda. So that one is the second one under the first reading. It should be 202226. Okay, Elizabeth?
Okay, we have six pieces of legislation before it's tonight. Four are up for first reading, two are up for the second reading. The first one is ordinance number 202223, which is an ordinance establishing an electric service budget agreement with St. Clairsville Municipal Utilities and declaring an emergency. As this was originally drafted, we did not have it as emergency legislation. But the utility department and the service director both pointed out that if we went by the charter, we would not have enough time to get the information out to those people that wish to enter into a budget agreement before the beginning of the budget year. And so that is why this one is being asked to declare an emergency. But you can do it on three reads if you so choose. We'll take one at a time, so.
Jeremy? Jacob, do you want to read 202223?
Tried. Ordinance 202223, an ordinance establishing an electric service budget agreement with St. Clairsville Municipal Utilities and declaring an emergency.
Okay, we'll move on to the next one.
Second one up is Resolution 2022-26. And this is a resolution authorizing the city council to increase the yearly compensation of some of its employees and declaring an emergency. Last, this usually happens this time every year. Last year, there was some discussion about doing a multi-year piece of legislation, but proceeded just to do a year at a time. This is for a 2.5% increase.
Okay, Jacob, do you read 202226, please?
Resolution number 202226, a resolution authorizing the city council to increase the yearly compensation of some of its employees and declaring an emergency.
We'll move on to the next one.
The third one up is 2022-27. That's a resolution approving the One Ohio Region 11 Governance Structure under the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding and declaring an emergency. And I'm not sure council remembers, last year, you did some legislation agreeing to become part of the One Ohio Drug Settlement. This was the suit that the state had against the pharmaceutical companies regarding distribution of opioids. We are now being organized into regions for distribution of the monies associated with that settlement. And that is what this legislation is regarding.
Okay, Jacob, would you read 202227, please?
Resolution number 202227, a resolution approving the One Ohio Region 11 Governance Structure under the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding and declaring an emergency.
We'll move on to the next one.
Okay, the fourth one is ordinance 2022-28. And that's the ordinance amending Title I Administrative Code, Chapter 105, Wards and Boundaries, Section 105.01, Division into wards of the codified ordinances of the city of St. Clairsville. And basically, on this one, council directed that we take out the language regarding...
Population.
Population, equalization of population among the wards. And this is not an emergency, so it will take effect 30 days after passage of the legislation.
Okay, Jacob, would you read ordinance 202228, please?
Okay, Jacob, would you read ordinance 202228, please?
Ordinance number 202228, an ordinance amending Title I Administrative Code, Chapter 105, Wards and Boundaries, Section 105.01, divisions into wards of the codified ordinances of the city of St. Clairsville.
Okay, then we're up to the last two, which are both up for second reading. First one being ordinance number 2022-24. That's an ordinance to make inter-fund transfers and real, reallocations within the funds for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the city of St. Clairsville, state of Ohio for the period January 1, 2022 through December 31, 2022, and declaring an emergency. And that is the transfer of the $200,000 from the general fund into the Street Department.
Jacob, would you read 2024, please?
Ordinance number 202224, an ordinance to make inter-fund transfers and reallocations within the funds for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the city of St. Clairsville, state of Ohio for the period January 1, 2022 through December 31, 2022, and declaring an emergency.
And the last piece of legislation up this evening, also for second reading, is ordinance number 2022-25. That's an ordinance amending ordinance number 2021-29 and authorizing expenditure not to exceed $250,000 for the calendar year 2021 to be completed in calendar year 2022 and declaring an emergency.
Jacob, would you read 2025, please?
Ordinance number 202225, an ordinance amending ordinance number 202129 and authorizing an expenditure not to exceed $250,000 for the calendar year 2021 to be completed in calendar year 2022 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Jacob.
And that's it for this evening. There will be a couple other pieces of new legislation for next meeting.
Okay, if anyone doesn't have anything, the next meeting, there's going to be a slight change on that. As you all know, we're on the first and third Mondays. Sunday, the 19th, is Juneteenth, which is a federal holiday, and since it falls on Sunday, it will be celebrated on Monday. And since it's celebrated on Monday, following the charter, will we move our meeting Monday night, the 20th, or to the 21st on Tuesday? And that will be at 7:00 that night for the regular meeting. So if anyone doesn't have any information they want to share or bring up, or if not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Do you see? Second. Don? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
Do you know about Dallas, Dave?